All right, it's nine thirty. We'll call this meeting to order. We need to start with an adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to... I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. Let's make sure we've got a quorum first, or at least enough here to do this. So I'm Don Hall. We have Beth Burns here. Who do we have on the phone?
Jason Spivey.
All right. Hello, Mr. Spivey. Anyone else? Okay, there's three. That's enough to proceed. So, Mr. Spivey, would you like to make a motion that we adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
All right, Mr. Spivey has made a motion. Ms. Burns, would you like a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Burns has made a second. All in favor say aye.
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 All right. And did we have someone else join us by phone?
I joined, Mr. Hall.
Okay. Mr. Springer, thank you. We just adopted the agenda is all. This is the last thing we've done. All right, item three, school improvement plans.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hall. As you know, each year, a requirement from the state is that our plans for improvement are adopted by the Board of Education. And so today, the one agenda item is a presentation by our principals for schools that are deemed by the state of North Carolina to be low performing, and it is their plans for improvement. I do want to first talk about, before getting into that, some of the things that as a district, what you're going to hear is their individual school plans, but I think it's also important to to know the work that we're doing at the district level in order to support these schools. Certainly, looking at several items, one is effective leadership, and I think that each one, when I look out to our schools and constantly looking at each one of these schools, we want to ensure that we have effective leadership at each school. And at this time, we certainly do have that. Of the six schools, remember, two years ago, we had nine schools that were deemed low performing. We are now at six schools and continually working our way to move those schools out of low performing. And in those six, we currently have, at least in the last year and a half since I've been here, three of the six do have new principals in them. And so we are always working with our leadership to ensure that we are making progress with effective leadership. So principal supervision is another area that we've worked with across central office, dividing our schools up amongst central office staff in order to ensure that our principals have the support, encouragement, also somebody as a point person that they can reach out to if they are in time of need. And so we have divided our district up with principal supervision, with myself, Mr. Taylor, both Mr. Taylors and Dr. Sawyer, each having four or five principals that we are the direct supervisor for. Of course, as superintendent, technically am the direct supervisor of all nineteen, but in order to make sure that these principals have support, we've divided that up. Principal mentors, several of our principals have mentors in order to help support them even further as they work on their daily work inside of schools that are considered high priority schools. And then, meeting with our principals multiple times a year, whether that's goal setting for them personally, for their school, also reviewing formative and benchmark data. Also, to review and support staffing needs. We're doing that now with each school and sitting down with principals and whoever they deem to be in those meetings along with our HR department, our finance department, looking at staff there and in order to support them through those staffing needs and changes, and also with Title I expenditures and support as well. The second item is effective teachers, you know, adding additional teachers, interventionist counselors to help support lower class sizes, MTSS, which is a multi-tier system of support, new curriculum increases to the overall quality of core content, ELA, math, science, social studies. This past year, we've added in continuous PD to establish strong understanding of that curriculum and instructional resources that go along with them to make sure that they're being utilized appropriately as best practices. An advanced teaching roles grant we've applied for, which will create, help create a tiered system for teachers, because many times your most advanced teachers, once they become a teacher, there's nowhere for them to go if they choose not to get into administration. So advanced teaching roles allows us to create a system in our school for, to allow teachers to move up within the teaching role and receive additional pay. So we are looking forward to receiving that grant. We'll know more in the coming weeks of whether or not we get this grant. Additionally, tutoring, Pender County Schools utilizing the funding to support the establishment of tutoring programs that occur either during the school day or after school, supporting and promoting intervention time during the school day through flexible grouping, core supplemental or intensive supports through the MTSS process. Also, positive culture and climate, encouraging each school to develop a PBIS, which is Positive Behavior and Supports within the school, providing ongoing perception data to our teachers in order for our leadership to get feedback on the overall culture and climate within the school and to make adjustments according to that data. And then ongoing conversations and goal setting within these schools. We've applied and won the CEP grant a year and a half ago. In this past year, we extended that grant, which is free breakfast and lunch, which does improve the overall quality of culture and climate within our schools. Worked with our operations team to provide supports with our funding to provide improvements to facilities, furniture needs, and equipment in our schools. And then wraparound services from the central office, working with our county to get additional funding. So, once ESRS ended last year, making sure that we had continued to have counselors and social workers in our schools. The implementation of feeder pattern meetings was an additional item that we put in so that schools in the cluster, which have elementary, middle, and high schools, they are meeting regularly to talk about initiatives within that feeder pattern. So we've been working very hard to bring supports to each one of our high priority schools as well as other schools, but with a priority on schools that are deemed by the state as low performing. And so, with that said, I would like to begin the process of the presentations, and we will start off with Pender High School. Mr. Paquette will start us off in going through the individual school initiatives and their plan for improvements. Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Board, executive staff, colleagues, community watching online. Always a pleasure and a privilege to get an opportunity to discuss great things happening at Pender High School. Today's opportunity is related to our status as a low performing school. It will be whoever the principal may be of Pender High School's last presentation to you as a low performing school, so bear with me here, as we're well underway to do the work necessary to get out of status. Our vision continues to be that all stakeholders will provide an inclusive and engaging environment for our students to become active participants in life after high school. Really focused on continuing our march to improving the next seventy years for students after their time with us at Pender High School. Our mission aligns with that very closely. We do attempt to, and I believe we do, provide students with relevant differentiated instruction and opportunities for service learning and really being a part of our community, preparing our students to be employed in this community and to continue to give back in this community. Currently, we serve six hundred fifty-three students at Pender High School. The demographics are here on the screen, roughly sixty percent non-white, represented mostly by the Hispanic-Latino community as well as our black community. Leaving no one out, we serve a very diverse school community, many of those not represented in the future data sets you'll see because the subgroup numbers are pretty low. I understand that one of the things we always want to look at is what's different as time goes on. We are seeing a slight reduction in the population of white students at Pender High School and an increase in other subgroups. The data snapshot is a frustrating one to look at, fifty-four overall school performance score, leaving us with a grade of a D, one point away from being out of status last year. We did see improvements, as you'll see in a moment, among various subgroups, but overall, continuing the journey to ensure that we're growing students, that's an area of emphasis for us, and proficiency continues to increase. What you don't see here over a year ago is there are improvements in proficiency for various subgroups, particularly those students with disabilities, as well as our English language learners. Saw positive movement there. Boom. Growth comparison of the previous year versus two years ago, we did see what happens to be a significant increase in growth, yet unfortunately still not meeting the growth expectations. The largest movement of positive growth being nearly two and a half points within our white subgroup, as well seeing movement, significant movement counter to really national data with our economically disadvantaged students. So there is some signs of hope and some signs of progress that what we have attempted to set out to do is producing some fruit. We do have three goals, as you'll hear from my colleagues, that once in low performing status will govern us for the next three school years, the first being to eliminate opportunity gaps for students. School staff communicates school-wide behavior expectations that are understood and achieved by students, and staff provide positive behavioral supports is a key emphasis for us at Pender High School, as well as our school implementing a tiered instructional system that allows teachers to deliver evidence-based instruction aligned with the individual needs of students across all tiers. And this year's plan, our action steps focus on really setting, communicating, and monitoring, really the instructional framework, but most easily done for us internally and most impactful to monitor our lesson plan expectations and what we're providing for students. We have aligned with the district and are implementing Pender County Schools curriculum, as well as support resources and assessments to help us better gauge the pulse of our building along the way, and looking forward to positive outcomes when the cycle concludes. We continue to monitor all teachers for standards-based lessons through the use of walkthroughs, rounds, and learning walks within our building, and our EOC courses, with the help of Fallon Fuller and her department, continue to grow in their understanding of EVOs and that growth metric and how that's calculated, and how we can align the work that we do to have the most positive outcomes for students in that area. Our second goal is to improve performance. We have focused our efforts heavily to regularly communicate and invite our parents and guardians in about what is expected of them and the importance of the curriculum of the home, that is what parents can do at home in support of learning, that traditionally and nationally is an area that kind of declines as students get older. All right, we give more independence to students, but we are working to reengage and continue the engagement for those who didn't fall off, for students enrolled in our school and throughout our West Side Rising community. Additionally, units of instruction as in activities are aligned with any goals that students may have, plans that students may have, whether they be AIG, ELL, IEP goals, but really focused on the whole student. Some of our action steps you'll see here, ensuring our teachers have access, training and ongoing monitoring, particularly of attendance-taking procedures is a key area for us. We know that if students are at school, we have a better opportunity to improve outcomes for students. And so that's a key action step, particularly with the new system of Infinite Campus coming on board. Providing accurate daily updates of attendance rates to our school communities, so not just from the principal's office and internally, but also externally to our stakeholders about where we sit in the quest for our goal. Continue to celebrate and reward responsible student attendance, making sure that those who are meeting the mark are recognized for that and continue on that quest and see value in that, as I know many employers do. They prefer that their employees show up to work regularly and on time. Maximizing student support team and our MTSS team to reengage students, particularly with that chronic attendance patterns, many of the students we see who have attendance issues have had those attendance issues oftentimes since pre-K. It's a recurring issue, and again, trying to reengage parents and find other ways that we can support them and making sure that they know that we're open and welcome to students beyond the school day even. We'll take them when you can get them to us, but we know we can have an impact on them. Finally, our third goal is to increase our educator preparedness, so that our educators are prepared to meet the needs of every student. So we look at performance data, classroom observation data, and we use that data to make decisions about what we want to do next, school improvement, what we need to keep doing, what we need to stop doing, maybe what we need to start doing, and also align our professional development needs to what we're actually seeing in our school building on the ground. We appreciate the district's support in aligning with us when we have those needs. They've been great in doing that. We will continue to provide high-quality, ongoing, job-embedded, and differentiated professional development. And some of our action steps include communicating clear expectations for utilizing the behavior management system in Infinite Campus to support classroom management. A year ago, I presented to you, and we were really focused on the climate of purpose and order that would be necessary to sustain positive school growth at Pender High School. And we continue to communicate and implement the Pender County Schools consequence continuum to make sure we codify and have better alignment when students potentially do make a decision, counter to the expectation of how we handle that and use that opportunity to penetrate the level of thinking that happens to attempt to ensure that that same thing doesn't happen again, which would be appropriate in human development. These are our goals. Our goals, of course, are to meet or exceed growth. We will not back away from that goal and be shy of that goal. There's no reason we can't meet that goal, but currently, we are not meeting that goal. We continue to use data, as mentioned, to work with our teams from Dr. Bree Love and his staff, Fallon Fuller and her team, to work closely with our teachers to get down to the student individual data level to set more realistic and better goals of progress that teachers can use in the classroom. We continue to work towards seeing behaviors decrease, or unwanted behaviors, I should say. We made great progress in a year ago, and we currently have a goal to cut the last year's number in half of office referrals that need to be handled by administration deemed counter to the educational and instructional environment. And finally, we are, well, not finally, probably mostly, really trying to find additional ways and continue to review what our processes, procedures, expectations, communication of those things are in regards to getting to school on time, staying the full day, and seeing that there is no replacement to a live teacher specializing in a content area to help you meet the goals that you have for yourself. And we are currently seeing an increase over the data a year ago, but obviously, the cycle's not complete. We are at the highlights wrap-up next steps before questions. You know, we're really focused on making sure that our community, so not just Pender High School, but I speak to my colleagues on this, we have some of the best people that I've ever met, quite honestly. They are great. My fear sometimes is they don't believe that about themselves. And so this year, we're really focused on reminding them that we see you, we hear you, you are important, and you have so much value add to the world and certainly to our school community. We look at our diversity as a school as a real asset to work towards our goal. It's a beautiful thing to see. As you know, our ROTC programming is just as good as it gets, and we continue to learn from them and apply their strategies in other clubs and other academic areas as well as among our admin team. We study that program to get better. I'm sure the district does as well. Our teachers this year, a little different, something we did not have in place. We are meeting on a weekly basis in PLCs, aligning, unpacking, implementing, studying the impacts of the instructional framework and how do we strengthen our instructional core. We have done a much better job at facilitating data meetings of all sorts, from attendance to academics, to discipline, with key leaders in the room, and with teachers as well to ensure that our next steps are the right next steps to continue the positive momentum we've definitely felt at Pender High School. Our community and schools continues to support us in a variety of ways, but one of those in a primary way is attendance, and they're doing an excellent job to help us reward responsible attendance, also providing food, transportation for students to get additional enrichment after school through their programs. If you've ever been around, we do try to make our daily announcements worthwhile of participating in and reminding, again, students that there are goals, that we are on a path to meet them. We have not yet done so, but that you are worthy, and we are seeing progress and just reinforcing that there is positive happening at Pender High School. We continue to work with executive staff as well as other entities in our community to provide new opportunities for students to find ways to connect to the schoolhouse. Some of those this year have been the addition of adding an automotive technology program through our relationship with Cape Fear Community College, electrical programming there. And I'm missing one of my apologies to Joseph and his team there, but providing those right there on the school site has been a benefit to getting some of our students typically disenfranchised or disconnected to the schoolhouse, back engaged, and also getting them certified and prepared for employment beyond graduation. It is at this time, I open myself, as always, to any question, no matter how complicated. I'll do my very best to provide you a reasonable answer and the truth.
Questions from Mr. Springer and Mr. Spivey. Do y'all have any questions?
I do not.
All right, no questions.
Good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on. At this time, I'll call up Mr. Allen from Bergall Middle School.
Good morning, Board members, good morning, Dr. Bree Love, Cabinet members, colleagues, and community. We've been doing some great things at Bergall Middle School, and I am very excited to share that with you this morning. All right, over the summer with our leadership retreat, we did have some leadership team members come, and we redesigned our school vision, our school mission. We wanted to condense, shorten a little bit just so our folks could fully understand, comprehend, and be able to remember what our vision and mission are. So our vision is we create an environment where high academic standards and good behavior empower every student to thrive, with our mission to foster academic excellence through rigorous learning and critical thinking. All right, our school demographic information, we did grow a little bit from last year. We're sitting around two hundred and forty-three students. Do have forty percent white, thirty-two percent black or African-American, twenty percent Hispanic, five point one percent two or more races, and one percent other. All right, we do have some celebrations at Bergall Middle School currently. Last year at Bergall Middle School, we were an F school. This year, we have grown to a D school. We are very excited about that. Our school recently had a growth celebration with all faculty, staff, where we really wanted to celebrate and acknowledge all the hard work. We do still have some Fs in some of our subgroups, but we are actively working to improve those scores, and you'll see some of that through the presentation here today. Again, a performance grade of forty with a D. We still have a lot of room to grow, but we did make some significant growth this past school year. Okay, you can definitely see some positive color changes from twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-four, twenty-five. If you'll just notice, the changes from the red color to the green color, that's pretty simple for most folks to see. You can see that the growth, we still have some with our economically disadvantaged students, and we are working on our math scores, but we definitely did make some significant growth as far as meeting the growth from one year to the next. All right. Very similar goals, as Mr. Paquette went through as far as eliminating opportunity gaps by 2027. Big with communication for school-wide behavior expectations, and then also the tiered instructional system. For specifics for Bergall Middle School, we use our PBIS behavior matrix that is taught with fidelity in the classrooms. We review those at the beginning of the year, throughout the year, but it's also a big part for us to target those as we come back from any breaks. We have targeted co-teaching and pull-out support provided by ELA and Math Interventionists, and they really are able to identify a lot of our deficits and help us close our gaps. We have consistent support provided by our newly hired instructional coach. He'll be with us and Wes Pender two to three days per week, but we are looking to possibly rotate him in and out each to possibly rotate him in and out each week for each school so he can spend a full week at each school. We also have consistent support provided to new and returning teachers. We do have seven BTs at Burgal Middle School this year, but they have been an excellent addition to our team, and we support them through the use of our BT coach, instructional coaches, our interventionists, and our admin team. So we do feel that we have a large amount of support for our new and returning teachers. All right. Goal two, to improve school and district performance. The school regularly communicates with parents, guardians about expectations. And then units of instruction activities are aligned with AIG, ELL, IEP, and objectives. We have completed two Title I curriculum nights thus far, and we did have parent-teacher conferences that were scheduled through the end of October. Parent-teacher conferences was new to Burgal when I arrived, so it was definitely something that we felt was extremely important, to bring our family members into the school, to make them feel welcome in our school, and to have them be stakeholders with their child's education. So we do pride ourselves on that. We conduct observations, walk-through observations, and regular observations of classroom culture during walk-through observations. And then we do have a family survey that'll be going out at the end of this month. We wanted three months of action to then send out the survey, and then we will follow up again in May and then compare those results, just to kind of get a pulse on how we're doing with our communication to our families. Goal three is increased educator preparedness. We regularly look at school performance data and aggregate classroom observation data to make decisions, and then we provide high-quality, ongoing, job-embedded, differentiated professional development. This is done weekly at our grade-level meetings, myself, our interventionists, our coaches. Every Tuesday, we sit down with our grade levels, and we dig into data, and we review expectations, and also teaching techniques with our faculty, staff. We have consistent support from our BT coach. We have included our BT coach at those monthly PLC meetings where he's able to come and provide instructional techniques and strategies for not only our BTs, but our veteran teachers as well. And then also, the BT coach and instructional coaches attend at every one of those grade-level PLC meetings, and it's a way to bring our team together to ensure that they feel supported by every member of our team. All right. And then lastly, the school improvement goal provides supports, whether it's personnel, programmatic, financial, for instructional priorities. And we have aligned our resources allocation with our Title I math interventionist, our Title I ELA interventionist, and then our Title I instructional coach. And all three of those positions are vital to the growth and success of Burgal Middle School. All right. Just another breakdown for our goals and metrics. One of our focus areas for eliminating opportunity gaps is our students with disabilities. We are looking to grow those by 3%. That aligns with our middle school goal across the district. The current index is negative 0.32, so we are looking to increase that this school year. Last year, we did not have a full EC team at Burgal Middle School, but this year, we do have a full team. We were able to split our adaptive classroom into two rooms. We had one teacher covering all students last year, whereas this year, we have two teachers covering two separate classrooms. So we're able to break that down in smaller groups. As far as that second one there for goal two, increasing 3% in ELA math and eighth-grade science proficiency. You can see our three baseline scores there for ELA math and science. And then lastly, goal three, increased educator preparedness, and that we're looking to continue to improve the culture. We did have some transitions in faculty, staff last year, which have been positive for Burgal Middle School. So at this point, we are cultivating and growing our culture, and we look forward to seeing the successes as we move through the school year. Again, that survey will be sent out at the end of this month, and then again, followed up in May. And then some highlights, next steps. So again, I continue to highlight our weekly grade-level PLC meetings with our admin, interventionists, and support staff. At those meetings, we really are working to build the capacity of our teachers to approve the core instruction, as well as and use our intervention support to identify those gaps and make growth along the way. Again, our BT coach and digital learning specialist, we have had them attend our grade-level PLC meetings. The BT coach comes in and provides instructional strategies. There's an eight-session series that he's currently doing right now. And then we do have our digital learning specialist that has come and provided professional development in-house for communication for teachers, utilizing the rooms program. And we review those reports with teachers and our digital learning specialist, just to sort of see how well our communication is moving through the channels, but then also to provide them with coaching support to make their lives as a teacher just a little bit easier. And then we utilize the data and support staff to facilitate that targeted small-group instruction, our interventionists, our ML tutor, our EC teachers, and then also, we have tutors from the Early College that join us two days a week. Those are all facilitated through small-group instruction to provide that individual attention for students. We have our intervention enrichment blocks that provide that focused support through their learning pathways. Each pathway is specific to each student, and we have seen some tremendous growth as far as completing those pathways. They're to complete two reading, two math each week, and then Friday is their reward day if they've met their goal. And we have seen an increase in how many students are receiving that goal each week. Working with our interventionists, MLEC instructional coaches to strengthen our core of instruction. When we arrived to Burgal Middle School, we were able to identify that if you're looking at an MTSS model, we were a reversed model where 80% of our students needed intervention support, 20% were meeting their needs to the core, but we're looking to reverse that. You know, our traditional model would be getting where 80% are meeting in the core, 20% need that support. So we are working with our instructional support staff to improve those numbers. We have our Rising Red Devils team, where we support students that fill a course each quarter. We have adults on our team that are assigned to each student. They meet with that student weekly to build relationships, build rapport, communicate with the families, pull up Infinite Campus, have them check their grades, and it provides a sense of buy-in for the students, and it builds a relationship with an adult on campus. We also have the student tutoring partnership with Pender Early College High School, where two days a week, their students come to our campus in our media center, and they meet one-on-one with our students. We have about five of those sessions per day on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and we find that our students are finding the relationships and the involvement with those students to be just as helpful as the Early College students as well. This year is new to Burgal Middle School. We have a math counts competition team, where we will be participating in math counts this school year. That is geared for some of our higher math students, and we wanted to find a way that they could be celebrated for their high successes in mathematics. So we are interested and excited to see how that team works this year. We have a volunteer within the community that comes to us weekly, and she works with those students in a small group table. And then again, lastly, I'll highlight our parent conferences that were completed by the end of October. We definitely feel that that was a major strength for us to be able to bring families in and to have them provide supportive feedback for our students through their growth. And that concludes. Any questions?
All right. Questions? Anyone on the phone have any questions? All right. Hearing none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. Next up, we have Ms. Garza from West Pender Middle School.
Good morning to the school board, cabinet, colleagues. I'm very blessed to be here representing all warriors this morning, so thank you. So we are in year two of implementing West Pender's school vision and mission with the goal that we are setting the standard for middle grades' educational excellence through our warrior power principles of perseverance, openness, wellness, empathy, and responsibility. We believe that we reach this vision by ensuring that our school is dedicated to continuous learning, and it builds opportunities for community success for all stakeholders through the fostering of equity, inclusivity, and engaging students through transformative learning experiences. Specifically, you can see our demographic by ethnicity is very diverse, similar to my colleague's schools as well, something that we celebrate. We are currently, we have 206 students. We've grown by about 20 students this school year from last school year. 34% of our students being white, 33% black or African-American, and 29% Hispanic or Latino. In our data snapshot, you can see here that our school performance grade is a grade of a D. This is our second year being a grade of a D. In year one of my principalship, we, after that first year, we moved from an F to a D, and in the second year, we've maintained our D status. You can see that our school performance grade reflects strong growth in all areas. It is the area of achievement or proficiency where we are focusing our attention and getting our school improvement grade to be higher. So very specifically, if we look from year to year, we have a tremendous amount to celebrate here. One thing that you can see is that West Pender Middle School met growth in all subgroups. Specifically, we had a new subgroup this past year, and that was our students with disability. That was a new subgroup that you can see that's in green, that the year before, we did not have enough students in that subgroup, and we are proud that in that influx of students, that we were still able to meet within that subgroup. Now, specifically, we are sitting in this school year at 17% for our ML population. You'll see that here where it says ELS. And so that will be a new subgroup for us this school year, that we look forward to also meeting or exceeding growth for that subgroup as well.
All right. Our goal number one, eliminating opportunity gaps by 2027. Very specifically, while we have quite a few action steps here that have been developed by our school improvement team, they really can be summarized into two categories. The first set of action steps are really about classroom management, making sure that this is a focus for us as an entire school. We believe that one of the greatest ways to improve student proficiency and growth is to decrease loss of instructional time, and we do that by making sure that all students are able to stay in class and stay focused. So this school year, we have a focus on classroom management implementation, communicating clear expectations, not just to students, but to staff as well, and that we are utilizing our new behavior management system in Infinite Campus to support those goals. Additionally, we know that the other piece related to ensuring strong decrease of instructional time is making sure that students are at school. So attendance is another heavy focus of ours. Our attendance committee, very specifically this year, is focused on creating and maintaining consistent monitoring process for student attendance, which they have done so very well this year, so that we can diagnose the reasons for chronic absenteeism, so that when we are developing solutions to chronic absenteeism, we're doing that in a really data-driven way, so that we make sure that we are efficient in whatever it is that we're putting into place. Our attendance committee is also working strategically to develop and implement strong attendance interventions aimed at increasing overall student attendance for this year. Goal number two is to improve school and district performance. Specifically, we are doing this with a very heavy focus in lesson planning, making sure that we have communicated school-wide lesson plan expectations that are developed from the bottom up, from our school improvement team. And in a small school, that means the majority of your teachers are on your school improvement team. So our school improvement team has created school-wide lesson expectations this year that are standards-driven with a vocabulary focus, and we are working to monitor that all teachers are implementing these standards-based lessons, that they're visibly executed in the classroom when you walk into a space, and that we are using our learning walks and our walkthroughs, not just as administrators, but as teachers, in order to reflect on our own instructional practice. And we are, in addition to that, this year, we are also developing lessons through strong vertical PLCs, which is a new focus for us this year, using our Title I funding to strategically support math teachers getting together, to support our reading teachers getting together, to support our science and social studies teachers in working strategically full days at crunching data, creating lessons together, so that we are working sixth through eighth grade to hit those lesson planning expectations. Goal number three is to increase educator preparedness to meet the needs of every student. Very specifically, we have created this school year a teaching and learning walk schedule that started in August. So monthly, teachers engage in learning walks. We believe that at West Pender Middle School, teacher effectiveness increases when we're in each other's classroom spaces. Therefore, all of our teachers engage in learning walks monthly with the goal of holding ourselves accountable and sharing best practices across our school. We, in addition to that, administration communicates, we communicate whole-school walkthrough feedback to our whole staff monthly. In fact, we have a little game that we play monthly to determine if we are healthy or unhealthy in this process, just to have some fun with it. And last but not least, our indicator that is ensuring that we've aligned our resources specifically to support West Pender Middle School. Very specifically, we've created a master schedule that includes Tier III and Tier II interventions, and that all ML and EC students are receiving their service without interrupting any core reading and math time. Additionally, as Mr. Allen described, we have instructional coaching support that is new this year that we are sharing between Burgal Middle School and West Pender Middle School, and we are very excited about that level of support provided by the district to ensure an instructional coach is on my campus, you know, at least for a full week twice a month, has already had a tremendous impact, that we are working across the next three years to decrease class sizes in all core areas, as we anticipate that geographically, our areas are going to continue to grow, that ensuring that our class sizes meet the expectations of what is really necessary to provide students with the individual education that they deserve, and that we are funding whole-day vertical teaming for our tested subject areas in math, reading, and EC, and eighth-grade science. When we take a look at our school improvement plan overall, and the metrics that we're using to monitor this, our metrics are pretty straightforward. We will be using our EOG proficiency, our average daily attendance, days of OSS to determine the number of days students might be missing for instructional time, and our overall growth to determine the health and wealth of our school improvement plan. But specifically, in real time, we are also tracking our I-ready lexiles for reading and our I-ready quantiles for math, so that we're not waiting until the end of the school year to determine if we're doing well, that we're progress monitoring that on a monthly and quarterly basis for our students and our staff. So as we are embarking in this new school year, this year, we have shifted our approach to embrace an asset-based mindset. Instead of focusing on what our school lacks, we're highlighting and growing our strengths, talents, and potential within our students and staff. We believe that a deficit mindset cannot move us forward, and it cannot help us shed the label of a low-performing school. So that's why we're doubling down on our hashtag #capturethelearning initiative, because every success, every moment of growth, and every win is going to ensure that we have a brighter future at West Pender Middle School. So just to highlight some things thus far, we have this school year a national beta recognition. We have received to date four different grants, our Aquarium Scholars Grant, two Bright Idea Grants, both going to help students fund some new band equipment, so that we have more students that can have instruments without having to worry about the cost of joining our band, which 50% of our students are currently in our band program. We have one of our grant winners, Mr. Greenleaf's classroom. His classroom is getting a little bit of a makeover because of our Bright Ideas Grant. And then just recently- And then just recently, the Knights of Columbus Grant is sponsoring two of our EC classrooms to help with mindfulness corners, so we're very proud of that as well. We also have 95% staff attendance, and I would, it would be a disservice to not celebrate that while I have the opportunity, because we have an amazing, dedicated, committed staff at West Pender Middle School that shows up every single day to do the hard work that we do. We also have high community engagement for our Title I events. For example, our Curriculum Fair this year, remember, we, our ADM is only 206. We had over 275 participants at our Curriculum Fair this year, and if you are in the neighborhood on December 19th, we invite you to the next one, which is our Steam Night in Winter Band Concert. So we hope that you can come and join us. We also have a high retention rate, and that is what this graph is here to demonstrate. One of the things that has changed tremendously over the last two years is we have three beginning teachers, which is significantly lower than it was before. Our teacher retention rate is increasing, which also means our levels of experience for our teachers is increasing, and we're very proud of that. Also, I want to give a shout-out to all of our tested teachers, because they all met growth last year and wanted me to share that good news. We are also offering, for the very first time in West Pender Middle School history, two high school courses. So we are offering this school year World History to seventh-grade students and English One to our eighth-grade students. Very specifically, 15% of West Pender Middle School students this year are taking high school classes, and 27% of them are taking advanced classes as a whole school. And so we're very happy to capture that learning that's happening at West Pender. So, thank you. Are there any questions?
All right. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Garza? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. All right. Moving on, we have Pender Lee. We have Mr. Harris coming up.
Good morning, Board, Cabinet, colleagues, community. I'm Stephen Harris, Principal at Pender Lee. So I'm excited to share all the great things that we're doing this year to start the school year. As you all know, this is my first year here, and we've got a lot of great things going for us. Reviewing our vision and mission, I didn't really come in and change this. I wanted to kind of, you know, gauge where we're going to go as a school and before kind of moving forward with this. And so providing rigorous expectations for our school, community, including our students, educators, and families. Our focus will be increasing overall proficiency and providing a supportive climate and establishing a climate of excellence. And so that does go along with what, the way that I vision as well, so with that. So our mission at Pender Lee is for students to have a safe and rigorous learning environment where students are engaged, supported, encouraged, and take ownership of their educational outcomes. Students will listen, read, write, speak daily in all content areas. So again, review of that. Our student demographics, we have a 473 students, and we're, you know, 90, 49% of them are white, and then we kind of mix across the other ones are of our other ethnicities and demographics from there. So I'm here in front of you today because we are unfortunately a low-performing school with a D grade, and as you can see there, we are both reading and math a D school according to the state's proficiency model. And if you look at our two-year data, from last year's data, unfortunately, we did drop as well in several categories, from met to, to not met, but those colors will change this year as we continue to grow as a school. So looking at this year particularly, some things that we have put in place, so looking at the elimination of the opportunity gap, goals one being that the school-wide behavior expectations are understood by students and staff provide positive behavioral supports, as well as number two, the implementation of a tiered instructional system that allows teachers to deliver evidence-based instruction aligned to individual needs of students across all tiers. And so I really wanted to particularly focus on the growth of our, of our academics there. And so I set some, as a, as a school improvement team, we set some actual like guidelines there, so we wanted to increase our proficiency for ELA by 5%, math by 6%, and science by 8%. And we plan to do this, we, we've got a lot of great things going for us here at Pender Lee, and so that would be continue our, our work with our instructional coaches with implementation of productive PLCs. Additionally, getting some additional middle school coaching support. When I was hired, we were, had only one interventionist for kindergarten through eighth grade, reading and math. And so one of my first orders was theirs, to try to work on getting us two different interventionists to work with reading and math, because to have somebody expected to know kindergarten through eighth-grade math and reading, that's pretty tough to, to take. So I wanted to specify one for math and one for reading to kind of more focus in on those pieces. And so that, including our instructional walkthroughs at the district level, as well as in-house instructional rounds, much like Ms. Garza's educational walks, we do something similar. We're doing in-house instructional rounds where teachers go from classroom to classroom and see other things that are going on, because there are great things going on in the classrooms at our school, and so I wanted to make sure that all teachers are seeing those things. And so additionally, like Dr. Bree Love mentioned, we are doing flexible grouping during our INE time during the day, so that would be, you know, working with students that are a specific need, and working with those students in our flexible grouping pieces for the day. A focus on content vocabulary, I think, is, is key for us. So every grade level is focused, and content is specifically working on that content vocabulary. The more content the students, the content vocabulary students master, the more easily accessible the, the curriculum would be. And then the year two of the curriculum implementation for all of our curriculums. Goal two, moving on to goal two, the improvement of school and district performances by 2027. Some of the stuff I talked to before kind of goes in line with this as well, but the school regularly communicates with parents and guardians about the expectations of them and the importance of curriculum at home, as well as the units of instruction and activities are aligned to AIG goals, ELL goals, IEP goals, and objectives for all students, which will be touched on towards the end as well. So, so this one I wanted to focus on, as, as our school improvement team, we wanted to focus on particularly student attendance, because if students are in school, they cannot learn. So we wanted to increase that from 92% to 95%, and students can't learn if the teacher's not in the classroom. So we wanted to increase that from 89% to 95%. And so some of the things we're working through as a school is we have created attendance goals and celebrations for each class, so as each class hits 95% attendance, they grab, they get a letter for the word attendance, and once they've spelled out the word attendance, they've hit level one, and then they get a certain celebration as a class, level two, so on, so on, so on. We have, also have a attendance team that works to identify chronically absent students and create plans for them, and that goes hand-in-hand with working with our social worker. We have PBIS morning celebrations, so if you ever come into our school on certain mornings, you will see some of the, the fun things we have the kids to do to kind of incentivize them to not only be at school but be on time as well. We have positive postcards for students. This has been a big hit for us, is sending home positive postcards for students, handwritten postcards that get mailed to the students. So some of these students, this might be the first piece of mail they ever get, and so the parents open it up, they read it. We've had parents posted on Facebook explaining how happy they were about these things, and teachers just writing, you know, handwritten notes to students, I think is, is a, is a big boost for these students and the families. And so I think that's something that I'm very proud that our teachers have kind of embraced and, and taken on. So we have a Penderly attendance dashboard that we share out to all of our staff and families that shows like where we're at attendance month-to-month, just to kind of hold ourselves accountable, and each other accountable. And then our admin focus of, of attendance, and we also have had two Title I events that have been regular, are well-attended. We've had a curriculum night, and then just last Friday, we had Inviter Grown-Up at School Day, where they got to eat lunch with our students, but also got to go to the classroom and some of their, see some things that were going on in the classroom and see how they could support at home. So one of the focuses our Title I committee has kind of focused on is, is not just what we're doing here at the school, but how they can focus their efforts at home. Goal three, increase educational preparedness to meet the needs of every student. The school regularly looks at school performance data and aggregated classroom observation data to uses that to data to make decisions on school improvement and professional development, and the school provides high-quality, ongoing job embedded in differentiated professional developments. Again, some of the stuff is already tied in, some of the things I talked to about already, but for this particular goal, our school improvement team wanted to focus on the teacher working condition survey with retention particularly, and increasing that to 95% or higher on positive feedback from when we get to that at the end of the year. And so some of the things we are working on, and again, mentioned is those instructional rounds, both in-house and district level, the additional coaching from the district and curriculum, anonymous feedback from our teachers and the community to, to get the feedback to, as a school leader, to internalize that, to, to better prove my craft, to, to work with all of our students, staff, and families. Staff shout-outs, staff can shout out each other during our weekly updates, as well as our parents. We have provided an opportunity for our parents to, you know, recognize teachers doing, going above and beyond, and our Teacher of the Month Celebration. All right. Our next goal is we are designated TSI school, particularly in our ML and EC population. And so what the things, our goal here would be to, by the end of the year, at least 95%, or sorry, 85% of our EC or ML students will meet or exceed their projected growth by EOG assessments, providing a targeted instruction and personalized learning plans. And so with that, we're doing a lot of co-teaching within our ML and EC population with our general education teachers. So they are pushing in, not just students getting pulled out for services, but there's also a lot of push-in and co-teaching when you go into those classrooms. And interventionists are supporting our core curriculum as well. So we, again, we split that one interventionist into two to support more students. Our ML targets, we have ML Mondays where our ML teacher sends out some strategies to help our ML students. During our weekly, monthly staff meetings, our EC and ML teachers will present information that supports our whole staff, and then our community and school supports, we have that partnership with them, and they are specifically helping some of our EC and ML students. Again, overview of our goals and just kind of the, a bigger view of that, but I really wanted to spend some time here focusing on the highlights that we've done through this year so far. Again, the positive postcards is something that is, is, has been one of the highlights for us this year as far as just being able to promote the positive things going on. We are, the first thing I put up there is our first intercession. Being a year-round school, it's going to be key for us to continue to do these intercessions. Every intercession we have, we've been, we're going to, we're focused on doing a week of additional instruction for our students who need it. And so we did it this last one in our fall, and we were, right before I left our school, we were talking as an instructional leadership team, some of the things we're going to be planning on doing for our next one coming up in just a few short weeks. And so we plan to do one for the winter and then again in the spring. So an extra week of instruction for our students as we're a year-round school, that should be the expectation moving forward, is that we have intercessions every time we do have a break in, in, in instruction. Our attendance initiatives that we've talked about, our instructional rounds, the hiring of interventionist, some, the flexible grouping, the in-house instructional rounds, the content push for vocabulary, and our most recent thing we are pushing out in an incentive initiative is our Word of the Week, which we focus on one word that can get across kindergarten through eighth grade. Like this week, it is Reflect. So just those basic words that may see on EOGs or may see on testing-type things that we push out whole school to, to connect with all grade levels. I would like to eventually hire a math tutor, looking forward, moving towards that, and then again, the winter intercession, teaching and learning. Continuing to push for lasting systems, under the elephant in the room is that Penderly has gone through a lot of changes over the past several years, and I plan to change that as a school leader, and not just for myself, but also the, the systems put in place to, to create a lasting impact on students. And so that's one of the things that we're looking forward to. And building a relationship, positive relationship with all staff, or staff, students, families, and community. I pride myself on making those connections early on. I mean, the car rider line every morning, I, anytime we have a community event, I'm trying to be out there. We just had ribbon cutting for the Parks and Rec that we were out there for right behind our building, and so we got to meet some community members there. So not just our, within our school, but our, building our community as well. And then there's maintaining those high expectations as well. I think that's going to be key for any leader, especially as one that has gone through a lot of changes over the past several years. All right, and that's end of my, so do I have any questions?
Yes, sir. One of the things that stood out to me was that, was the attendance there. Did I read that correctly, that your staff attendance was lower than your student attendance?
Last year, yes, ma'am.
Last year, and I realize that you are going off of information from when you were not here.
Yes, ma'am.
And so what specifically are you doing to incentivize staff to
I think it starts
Attend more regularly?
I think it starts with expectations.
Yes.
The expectation that I expect them to be there every day, and the expectation, expectations that, and this is what I brought in our first staff meeting, is that when students aren't there, one student can't learn. When a staff member's not there, you could have up to 30 kids who can't learn.
Indeed.
So, you know, I think just starting with that and then building from that, from on, and, and, you know, just celebrating them as, as staff, making them feel welcome and making them feel that they want to come to work every day, and creating those systems, processes, and procedures in place to, to make sure that they are, are in school and, and actively involved in every student's learning.
Right, because, I mean, well, honestly, you guys are the only year-round school in Pender County.
Yes, ma'am.
So I would have thought that that attendance would have been a little bit better with that schedule, but, and again, I'm not picking on you, I'm just trying to understand.
Positive. I will actually have this next slide. We, this is this year's attendance right here on the bottom. So as you can see, our staff has been
Very good.
Very good this year.
Okay, thank you.
That's, that's what we're looking at this year. So up till October, we've been 96 or higher every single time, and that's with all the sicknesses that have happened over the last month, so.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, yes. I had that just in case, I know that, I figured something would come up, because that, that number is alarming from last year to this year.
It is, but I see that you guys are definitely making gains on it. Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. All right. Moving forward, we have CF Pope. We have Ms. Brittany Moore.
Good afternoon, Board members, Cabinet, colleagues, and community members watching. I am Brittany Moore. I have the pleasure of being the principal at CF Pope Elementary. I was named principal in February of 2023, and so this is my second full year as principal at CF Pope. Our vision at CF Pope Elementary is to provide all students with a rigorous and rich educational experience in a safe and respectful environment that fosters lifelong learning. Our school's mission is to make sure that we're providing staff, families, and community members that are dedicated to the intellectual, social, and physical development of students by cultivating positive relationships, professionalism, and collaboration, where we can build and sustain a community that focuses on growth and proficiency of all students through diversified At CF Pope, we have a very diverse student population, 33% being black or African-American, and 35.6% being white or Caucasian, and we have a percentage of 9.3 of two or more races. I will note that our Hispanic population continues to grow each year. Right now, we are at 19.6% of Hispanic students, and usually between the fall and early spring, those numbers continue to increase a little bit more for us at CF Pope. And we have other subgroups that are less than 1%, including American, Indian, Asian, and Native Hawaiian or other. All right, and so some things All right, and so some things that I would like to highlight today, as we discuss proficiency and growth for CF Pope Elementary. I just also want to highlight our teacher retention rate. When I came to CF Pope at the end of February two thousand and twenty-three, our teacher retention rate was fifty-two percent. So over half of the student, the staff that is at CF Pope now, our staff that I hired my first year coming into CF Pope at the beginning of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and we are up to eighty percent retention this school year. And so as you can see, our overall performance grade was a forty-one, with achievement being a thirty-six point two and growth being sixty-one. And of course, that model is eighty-two, eighty to, eighty percent of that score is based on the achievement, and sixty-one of the growth is twenty percent of that score, resulting in a performance grade of a forty-one and a grade of a D. All right, and looking at data snapshot from one year to the next, of course, you do see more red than green from last year to this school year. And just some things that I want to highlight specifically for elementary education this year. We did implement two new core curriculums, one for reading being Way and Wisdom, and one for math being Eureka Math Square. As a district, we have put a lot of supports in place going into this school year with supports for the new curriculum. So I'm excited to share with you guys some of the things that we've learned from last year and supports that have been in place this year moving forward to continue to show growth at CF Pope. Like many of my colleagues, we have the same overall goals, but our action steps are specific to our school. So discussing eliminating opportunity gaps by two thousand and twenty-seven for students at CF Pope, specifically beginning with school-wide behavior expectations. Coming into CF Pope, behavior was definitely a high need and priority for our school. And as a leadership team, we definitely know that behavior has to be under control for students to be able to learn and teachers to be able to teach. So I really want to talk to some of the vital things that we've done this year to support our teachers with behavior so that learning can take place as well. We have a new counselor who also supported our teachers with first ten-day PBI lesson plans that were aligned to the school's behavior matrix, which each teacher taught explicitly each day for the first ten days of school. And following the first ten days of school, those students still had a special step followed up with our PBIS expectations. We have a PBIS committee that meets monthly to discuss the implementation and successes of our PBIS committee and implementation at our school, and how that is impacting students and the, for them to have positive outcomes. We are also continuously tracking student behavior and the effectiveness, effectiveness of our behavior supports. And of course, we have celebrations for positive behavior across the school and share success stories with students and staff. Continuing with the same goal, just, just additional steps. Indicator to specifically focus on the multi-tiered system of supports for teachers, delivering instruction that is aligned with the needs of students. Students who were on supplemental and intensive plans during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year continued in two, our two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five school year on a plan. And those students were evaluated based on the interventions provided and the attainment of the goals that were specific to them. And we determine whether or not, based on coming to the new school year, with interventions being provided for at least the first six weeks of school, we met as the MTSS team with teachers to determine whether or not those students needed to continue another round of supplemental, whether they need to be recommended to intensive or transition back to core if the data supported that. We also have an MTSS coordinator who meets with our teachers in the instructional team a minimum of once per month to review student data and progress monitoring. We have designated MTSS meetings with teachers, which are held on each second Tuesday of each month. We are also using several data points to assess and identify student needs, including M-class, NC check-ins. New this year, we also have star reading and star math, in addition to our district benchmarks and common assessments that we have aligned across elementary schools. And we also have embedded curriculum assessments for Eureka Math and Way and Wisdom. And we are also using previous standardized test scores to make those instructional decisions. Our goal two is to improve school and district performance by two thousand and twenty-seven with specific goals for each school year. Specifically discussing indicator one of goal two is looking at the communication and how we increase parent engagement. Weekly messages are sent home each Sunday to inform families of announcements, important dates, processes, expectations, and supports that our school has in place or upcoming. Our school sends home individual score reports for district and state assessments to inform parents of their child's progress and academic performance. And those data points are coming from M-class, NC check-ins, BOG three, read to achieve, star reading, and star math, and our three-five district benchmarks. Continuing with goal two, indicator one, additional action steps include, this year we added to our Title One night, progress report pickup, and student-led conferences to the annual Title One night. And we have already seen with that event this school year, an increase in parent engagement. There were more parents who attended this year, fifty more families than last year attended our Title One night. And just based on data, we have come to the conclusion that if parents are going to come to the school outside of events for fall festivals and things like that, it has to be directly connected to their students. So we wanted to add progress report pickup and add some student leadership opportunities for the students to be able to talk about the work that they were doing in classes. So we did see an increase in parent engagement this year with our first Title One night by pairing it with progress report pickup and student conferences. Some upcoming events that we have, the school is going to host a day in a classroom that allows our K through five parents or guardians to join a Way and Wisdom or Eureka Math Square lesson to learn alongside students. This year, we were fortunate enough to be granted the Duke Energy Science Night Kids for our school. A few years ago, it was more standard for almost any school that applied to get it, but that grant has expanded. So it's a little harder for schools to qualify for that grant. So for the first time, CF Pope was selected to receive Duke Energy Science Night Kids. So in April, we will host a Duke Energy Science Night that invites parents and guardians to engage in a variety of hands-on science experiments that align to the North Carolina State courses study for each grade level. In addition, one event that we have each year is a Transition Night. And for kindergarten through fourth graders, and we try our best to collaborate with Burghardt Middle for our fifth grade students so that parents are able to attend both schools in one day. And the purpose of the K four Transition Night is to inform parents of strategy, skills, and standards that their children will be introduced to the next school year in hopes that they will work on some of those skills over the summer to prevent a loss of academic knowledge. All right, and continuing with goal two, indicator one, this focuses on units of instruction and activities that are aligned with AIG, ELL, and IP goals. Our action steps includes teachers using a variety of assessment tools, both formative and summative, to track student progress. Our AIG students, of course, we have an instructional AIG coach at our school who is with our AIG students two to three days a week where they are engaged in advanced challenging activities that extend beyond the regular curriculum that they're receiving during core. And our ELL students receive scaffolds support in the form of visual aids, bilingual resources, and peer collaborations. And this year, for the first time, we do have our ML teacher pushing in during Way and Wisdom for our students. And specifically focusing on our students with disabilities, students with RAPs are receiving personalized support such as additional time on assignments, access to assistive technology if warranted or outlined in their IEPs, modified assignments. These activities are adjusted to accommodate learning preferences with clear manageable steps and tasks for students, including visual or hands-on material for support with learning as well. And this year, we were able to start the school year with three full-time EC teachers, whereas last year, that position was vacant for a while. And goal three, one of the goals that make me most proud about being a principal and the hard work that goes into being low-performing or a high-need school is the work that we are preparing our teachers to do every day. We are using progress monitoring data, data points for each student to track growth. And each of, we have a data room this year where we have a data wall for math and a virtual, a data wall for reading, a virtual wall for math, where each student is tracked, and we look at that data each month to move students. And it's just exciting to be able to sit back and watch and, based off the instruction that has been received to watch those individual students be moved on the walls. So the teachers are able to see that the hard work that they're doing is making a difference in the lives of our students and the academics that they're receiving. We do that through our weekly PLCs that are facilitated by admin, instructional coach, and our beginning teacher coach. We have also did a great job this year at selecting professional development programs that specifically address the gaps identified in our data reviews. Continuing with goal three and additional action steps, we are ensuring that professional development is aligned with the school and district's instructional priorities to ensure that professional development is job embedded. And for our school, this looks like full-day planning days for our teachers, K five. And we, of course, through our B two program and our school-based program that we have for beginning teachers, we have paired our new or less experienced teachers with veteran teachers who can offer guidance, support, and mentoring. And we are a designated TSI school, so some of the action steps that we have put in place is administrated ML and EC. And our intensive interventionists, which we have three at our school this year, we worked together over the summer to create a master schedule that includes a minimum of thirty minutes for reading and math that is an intervention and enrichment block each day for each grade level. We have also allotted Title One funds to hire an additional teacher for class size production in fifth grade, which is our lowest performing cohort. We are also using Title One funds to create an after-school program called Panther Power Hour for third through fifth grade students to receive tutoring and enrichment in reading, math, and fifth grade science, two days a week for one hour thirty minutes each day. This will begin January seventeenth after our winter break. Administration and instructional leadership team has met interior teachers. Just like we tier our students, we have also tiered a level of support that we feel like our teachers need based on data to be able to meet the needs of all of our students. And just some snapshot data I would like to share with you all. Our academic goal this year, of course, is to increase our overall achievement level. But I do want to highlight just the baseline of where we are right now and things that we have put in place. Metrics, looking at our achievement data, the metrics that we're using is EOG data, M-class, star reading and math data, walkthrough data, former observations. And I do want to highlight our student attendance rate, while right now it does not reflect it at the district expectation of ninety-five, but for our school, it has continuously grown this school year. Our student attendance rate for October was ninety-three percent, and our staff attendance rate was ninety-four. Looking at achievement from last year, our overall achievement as a school was thirty-six percent. Looking at reading three-five was thirty percent, math at thirty-nine point four, and fifth grade science at forty-four point six. And I did want to highlight our M-class data for our K two students because ultimately these become the students that take our state tests in third through fifth grade. Our kindergarten students came in at ten percent proficient. First grade, twenty-two percent, second, thirty-one, and third, thirty-eight percent. And that was a twenty-five percent at or above overall for K two. And I'm just proud to be able to say that through data digs, those numbers have increased by over twenty-five percent for each of those grades within three months of school. And looking at our health and safety, this is also an area that I'm proud to highlight this year when it comes to discipline and office referrals resulting. And OSS, PBIS celebration attendance rate, and we've implemented something new this year that I've kind of taken from my mentor at her school. So thank you, Dr. Oates, for all of your support with guiding me and my school as well. But last year, this time, CF Pope had over thirty-five, almost forty, out-of-school suspension, and this year, we are at seventeen. Out of that seventeen, it, we have identified that it is mostly the same students. So we have put in wraparound supports for those students. Ninety-two percent of our student population was able to attend our first quarter celebration. And we have implemented a pent-up support system this year that has really been a big support to our teachers with the immediate response to behavior and interventions. And our culture and climate for this year, of course, our goal this year is while we retained eighty percent of our staff last year, our goal is to retain eighty-five percent this school year. And increase family engagement participation in academic-focused activities from twenty-five to thirty. And of course, across the district, we're all focusing on attendance and increasing that to ninety-five percent. We are using Title One parent surveys feedback to track our parent feedback, our staff attendance rate. And we have met and provided differentiated PD for teachers. And one thing I haven't heard my colleagues into, because all of us in here are in the same feeder pattern, but we are also meeting as a feeder pattern on a monthly basis. And while the expectation has not been to meet every month, we've had three of those meetings already this school year. And just some things that I really want to highlight, for the first time this school year, we had a school-based leadership retreat at the very beginning of the school year during the optional workdays where we brought in our grade-level leads, our EC teachers, ML teachers, and our interventions where we met and did some goal-setting as a school. Just last Friday, we had our first quarter awards assembly, which has been the first assembly for academics since two thousand and sixteen at CF Pope. Over ninety-eight of our students were recognized for perfect attendance for quarter one. This year, we do have support from Megan Winstead, who is our NCDPI K two literacy coach. We meet with her and as well as our instructional coach every Monday to discuss next steps and progresses that we're making throughout the week. Instructional rounds for core curriculum, we have already had those for the fall. Monthly data digs for reading and math, and this is where we are looking at each individual student progress monitoring data to determine how they are moving towards the grade level's goals. With our NCDPI literacy coach, we also have quarterly literacy walkthroughs. Our first one was in September, and we did a snapshot and walkthroughs through all of our kindergarten through third-grade classrooms to set three goals. Those three goals were to provide differentiated support for teachers based on the needs identified in our walkthroughs, which consisted of teachers receiving foundations training, GOs training, and additional support with Way and Wisdom and Eureka Math. The second goal for that was to tier our teachers across the school to determine the level of supports that are needed. So when we discuss tier one, tier two, and tier three, that is the level of support that we are providing to our teachers through a coaching model. And our last goal was to also continuously monitor the implementation of curriculum with fidelity. And one of the other things that we have been fortunate enough to do this year, we have a Great Minds coach from the, the Great Minds company that has created Eureka Math and Way and Wisdom. December tenth would be our fourth visit with Ryan from Great Minds, and he comes to our school and does a co-teaching. He models a full lesson for our teachers, and he co-teaches with three other teachers. And we've had the opportunity to record those lessons as a resource for other schools across the district as well. So we will complete our fourth observation with Ryan December the tenth. We have also been approved this year to implement AR or Accelerated Reader. Many of you may be familiar with that. But we did identify a need specifically at CF Pope that students need to cultivate a love for reading and be able to build stamina for reading. So we are excited to have AR this year for our students, which is implemented mainly at home through reading books. But we are excited to be able to have the opportunity for students to take AR tests at school. Again, our Panther Powerhouse after-school tutoring after meeting with Title One, we do have the funds to start that program in January. So we're very excited to be able to offer that additional support to our students. In addition to our CSO support of Twenty-First Century, that is already for second through fifth graders. We do have math and reading intervention blocks each day for all grade levels. Each day, thirty minutes blocks of math and reading interventions are embedded in our master schedule. We continue to meet on a weekly basis with our teachers. We have quarterly awards assemblies, and as I stated before, that first assembly was last Friday. We had a huge parent turnout for both K, pre-K through second and third through fifth grade. We continue to celebrate positive behaviors with our monthly and quarterly PBIS celebrations. We do have success teams at CF Pope that meet once a month, which is our PBIS team, our Vitality team, which kind of helps boost the staff morale. We have beginning and new teacher sessions, which happen the fourth Wednesday of each month. And we have a great chair of meetings with admin once a month on Wednesday as well. And we have a very active and supportive PTO that I'm very thankful for. And we have a very active and supportive PTO that I'm very thankful for. We evaluate North Carolina, our next steps, our students just took NC check-in, so our next steps are to evaluate that data to determine what our baseline is for that. And the biggest thing for CF Pope among our staff is just inspiring a sense of urgency for the need that our school has. So just providing consistent, ongoing feedback for our teachers in the moment, following up with walkthroughs, and just having ongoing conversations about the work that has to be done to move our school. Over to any questions.
All right, anyone have any questions for? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. All right, we are at our last school that we'll be presenting today, and that's Malpas Corner. Ms. Ellington, come on up.
Good morning.
You're the anchor.
Sorry.
You're the anchor.
Yes. Good morning, Chair, Board, Cabinet, and colleagues, and community members that are Our school vision, through teamwork and having high expectations, Malpas Corner will teach and model for students how to achieve in academics and life within a safe and supportive environment. Our mission is to provide high-quality, equitable education for all students in an inclusive environment, fostering the foundation of lifelong achievement. And our core values that we recognize as staff and that we also teach our students is that we are safe, we take ownership, we are achievers, and we are respectful. That also is our guide for our behavior matrix. The makeup of our school, we have approximately five hundred and twenty-three students, pre-K through fifth grade. This is our breakdown of demographics by ethnicity, we're about a third, a third, a third, white, Hispanic, and Black and African-American. Our data snapshot, looking at this, like Wes Pender was saying, we have really got to focus on our proficiency. We are not far off the mark from our growth, but that is going to be our focus. And we have also broken the subgroup information down by our grade levels so that we can also provide specific and strategic support there. Okay, our data from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four, we did lose some ground in our growth. However, we are not far from making the mark, and we are going to do that through our MTSS framework and implementing our new core curriculum. Eliminating opportunity gaps by twenty-twenty-seven. Again, like our team, school staff will communicate school-wide behavior expectations that are understood and achieved by students and staff, and the school implements a tiered instructional system. Our action steps are using flexible grouping for supplemental interventions. So currently, right now, first, second, third, and fifth grade have implemented supplemental interve, flexible grouping in our INE time. The teachers are focused on their wings, which are the what I need goals. Fourth grade will be starting this as soon as we return from Thanksgiving break. We have set up our MTSS team, processes and procedures. We meet once a month, and also part of our weekly PLCs is that one a month will be used for MTSS data in moving students. Our three-leveled system of behavior response and classifications, we are using the Pender County Schools consequence continuum, and we have implemented a core guidance program. Goal two, improving school and district performance. School regularly communicates with parents and guardians about its expectations of them and the importance of the curriculum. Unit instruction and activities are aligned with AIG goals, ELL student progress, IEP goals, and objectives for all students. Our action steps at Malpas Corner will be focusing on increasing attendance to increase instructional time. Our staff has maintained for the past two years a ninety-five percent higher rate. However, our students, it is an average of about ninety-two, so we are looking to increase that to ninety-five. We have, we do have a functioning attendance committee that meets every other week. We are looking at our students that are attendance concerns. We have contracts with families, and then we also have the Judicial Attendance Council where that we have used. We are doing attendance updates weekly on our website and on our webpage, and we also have attendance celebrations within our school. Increase family involvement at Title I events. We have done that by early and frequent communication, reminders, RSVPs, just getting it out there, letting everybody know. Progress monitoring our EC and ML students. We do this at our weekly PLCs and at our MTSS meetings. Our ML teacher and our EC teachers are also involved in that. Developing data walls to track specific standards and grade level goals. Again, the what I need goals are our wings, we're the eagles, so we have wings. And the teachers are moving their students' progress. Focusing on core and tier-one instruction and responding to student data. So we are using our core and our core resources strategically and intentionally, as I had spoken about in the flexible grouping at our different grade levels. Increasing educator preparedness to meet the needs of every student by twenty-twenty-seven. Again, we are looking regularly at school performance data and aggregated classroom observation data, and we are making decisions based off of that data. Our school provides all staff high-quality, ongoing, job-embedded, and differentiated professional development. What that looks like at Malpas, we have coaching cycles for teachers. As Ms. Moore was speaking about it, that's happening at CF Pope. We are also doing the same thing at Malpas Corner. The leadership team has specific teachers that we are working with on specific things. Intentional professional learning and planning for teachers. We do have full-day planning quarterly for our teachers and grade levels. We have intentional weekly PLCs and quarterly planning meetings. We also have intentional PD needs for teachers for our BTs, science PD, co-teaching with Witten Wisdom and Eureka Squared. We've had foundations PD and modeling in the classrooms by our coaches. The school has aligned resource allocation, money, time, human resources within each school's instructional priorities. At Malpas, we have ensured we have highly qualified teachers in place, K five. We will have a K two, I'm sorry, a two-three adaptive position being filled when we return from Thanksgiving, and all of our IAs, once approved from HR, have been filled our positions. So that is awesome. Intentionally departmentalizing in fourth and fifth grade, that is something new to Malpas this year. So in fourth grade, we have a teacher teaching math, one teaching science social studies, and we knew that we had a core of basic reading core issue in fourth grade from those third graders moving up. So we implemented foundations from third grade into our fourth-grade classroom, and then we have an ELA teacher. Fifth grade is divided up, ELA, math, and science. Title I budget and planning meetings to align our resources to student and staff needs. Again, going over budgets, teachers, staffing, school improvement team, our leadership team that meets once a week. We use our Title I funds for a reading interventionist, a math interventionist, our STEAM position that is in addition to our specials rotation. We have a behavior support specialist, and some of our personnel budget is also used for a full-time ML teacher. Here's our goals and our metrics. Again, eliminating the opportunity gaps, we want our growth score at an eighty-five, so that is what we are working towards. Looking at our MTSS data, decreasing out-of-class time, so that's out-of-school suspensions, in-class suspension, I mean, in-school suspensions, working on our basic reading skills, K two, improving our school performance by twenty-twenty-seven. Again, overall EOG, and again, growth, and our student attendance, increasing that from ninety-one to ninety-five. Educator preparedness, again, we will, if we are prepared, we will see that in the increase of our EOG scores. And then number of teachers attending intentional PD sessions. And then we are also looking at our teacher working condition survey, specifically the sections with retention and school leadership. We would like ninety percent on each subgroup of that teacher working condition survey. And retention rates, again, we are about seventy-one percent right now for staff, and we would have a goal of ninety percent. And then our walkthrough data, we have eight per meet at least. Highlights and wrap-ups, first through fourth grade, implementation of flexible grouping, we have increased that. And like I said, fourth grade does start after Thanksgiving, and they came to us with that when they saw how children are moving. So that was awesome. We have communities and schools that are working with small groups of children. They are a part of our flexible grouping plan. They are working with our children that are just right there at being proficient, trying to get them over the line. All general education classroom positions are filled. We have monthly in-class student soar celebrations. We also have nine-week soar celebrations that are themed, and we've really been talking those up for the kiddos. Departmentalization in fourth and fifth grade and starting the walkthrough cycle. Any questions for Malpas?
Any questions for anyone on the phone? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That is it, right?
Yes, sir. Well, I appreciate it, board members, and so today you've heard, obviously, this is part of state requirement that we present. We will have to come back together for an approval of these plans.
I sent an email to everyone a minute ago. This is required to be done by December second, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Ms. Burns, can you do December second at nine-thirty AM?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, I can. About, and this will be all virtual, by the way, too, so no need to come for that. Mr. Spavy, could you do December second at nine-thirty?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, he may have dropped out. I've emailed everyone as well, but that's three, so let's go ahead and schedule that. I imagine the other two members will probably be able to join as well.
Yes, sir.
All right.
And I did want to say that I did ask the principals to stay. Typically, we have let them go, but I wanted them to stay. All six of those schools are designated by the state as low-performing and because the state sets proficiency rates for all students in North Carolina at a certain point, regardless of the starting point of students, their socioeconomic status, or their life situations. As shown today, Pender County schools, and these schools specifically, all right, are not the only working vigorously to improve student achievement, but we are working smart in adopting current pedagogical best practices across the board. Conversations among teachers, administrators, district office, staff are consistent and ongoing. Everyone knows the expectations by the Board of Education, our community, and the district when it comes to supporting the movement off the state's low-performing list. I can assure you, nobody likes to be on this list, and we are promoting urgency at all levels in implementing the resources available to bring equity to these high-priority schools. I spent multiple days in each one of these schools, and these principals will tell you that, and so has the rest of Cabinet. And I can assure you that academic progress is being made in each of these schools. We should all be thankful for these leaders, our teachers, and our support staff that are working in these schools. Each of our cabinet members, like I said, have also been in the schools, helping to support from their vantage point in what they oversee. I applaud our principals, our assistant principals, our teacher leaders, our beginning teachers, our support staff that are working on the same mission, and that is being professional educators, being urgent in our delivery as experts in the delivery of instruction and educational leadership. There's no doubt that we have many issues in Pender County schools, like many other districts, but the facts are that we are not satisfied with maintaining. We are working toward improving as a team effort, all right? And when I say team, I'm not just talking about Pender County schools or the board. Team means every stakeholder in the success of this school system. We all must understand that good is the enemy of great, and we have to battle mediocrity. Always compete and challenge ourselves to be better. One of the things that we need to be better at is more time in school, and I have said it, and I know board members have said it, and in my listening and learn, I talk to every staff, and I talk about a student who started in two thousand and twenty as a kindergartner, and we continue to follow a calendar that is one of the shortest calendars in the state. By the time that they will graduate, thirteen years later, they will have over a year's worth of education lost compared to students that graduated before COVID. The only exception of a year that we did not have a hundred and eighty-one, almost a hundred and eighty-two calendar days of instruction was during Florence, when you lost over a month's worth of education at that point. We continue to shoot ourselves in the foot with our calendar, and so we must work to improve our calendar, and I will continue to come to the board and our community as a whole, pleading the case that in order to help these schools, in order to help every other school, we must work to get a traditional calendar. I know that's not a popular thing to say, but I will continue to say it because it's the right thing to do for our students. You hired me as a superintendent to do what is right for our district as a whole, and I believe that this is a catalyst to our success, is a longer calendar, getting back to traditional Pender County schools, which was before COVID, before Florence. And pretty much a majority of this room remembers those days, and it matters because our kids matter, and we must do what is right for them. That's adding back in nearly three weeks of school, and it makes us happier as educators too, because we can build in workdays during first semester. Remember when elementary teachers would actually have workdays that they could have parent conferences on those workdays and bring in? These are the things that we've had to give up by going to a very short calendar with sixty-seven, sixty-eight days in first semester and then having ninety days second semester. But I just, I felt it on my heart that I needed to speak about this because each year we have to bring our low-performing schools in here, and whether they're low-performing or high-performing, our students deserve to be around high-quality educators each and every day, and the more that we can do that, the better off that we will be as a district. So, board members, that's all I have. I know I've taken a lot of your time, and I appreciate it. I know, I appreciate our principals and the work that they've done. I applaud them as we all should, and so thank you all very much for this opportunity, and I hope you feel good about where we are as a district and how we are moving forward. Thank you.
All right, anyone else before we go?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to adjourn.
All right, Ms. Burns has made a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Mr. Spavy has made a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, that's unanimous. Thank you. All right, that's unanimous. Thank you.